Questions of management with the information provided to the council members. Only management and council members are allowed to speak unless called upon. I do want to remind our public that for those who are seeing us via YouTube video, good afternoon. But the public also has the opportunity to speak before the council during each council session during the public discussion period. Before I turn this meeting over to Manager Daniels, I just want to thank everyone for your vote last year for being the 2025 Mayor Pro Tem. I've enjoyed it immensely and I look forward to 2026. At this time, Manager Daniels, I'd like to turn the program over to you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to have two public presentations today, starting first with Mark III, Representative with Mark III. They'll be presenting information with regards to our stop-loss program. And then I'll follow up with a presentation regarding longevity. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce some Mark and you can take it from here.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate your time today. Nice to say to be inside, sure. All right, so we've been through multiple renewal processes with Aetna on the stop-loss contract. The plans have been bid over the last three to four years every year to ensure that the city has the most competitive opportunities available to it. The challenge is that the city has had some significant high claimants that has been pushing the stop-loss contract into negative positions historically with Aetna. And they reflected that in their renewals. So the renewal for 26 this year was challenged. They had added about a $1.3 million laser to the contract. And what a laser is, it's a pooling level for an individual. So Aetna anticipated that one claimant, one individual would have claims in excess of $1.3 million. And that was a challenged position. So in response to that, it would not come off of that position. They felt very strongly that that was going, that risk that they needed to pass back to the city should remain in place. We did the plan. We got responses from Cigna, UHC, and Blue Cross in addition to Aetna. Through that bid process, Aetna did come off of that laser. So that was about a $1.3 million improvement in the bid process to the benefit of the city. Overall, Blue Cross and UHC were extremely competitive. The challenge for United Healthcare was they were in a contract negotiation with Wake Med. And the second challenge is that from the turnaround time, from the time we got the bids back, trying to make a transition to a different carrier for 1-1 was nearly impossible without having significant negative impact on the membership. The bid process, though, did give us an opportunity to improve the risk profile for the city. And that was through Blue Cross on a stop-loss arrangement only. So this slide, we have about a $35 to $40 million block of business with Blue Cross just on the stop-loss alone. It is the largest contract that Blue Cross has in the state, whether private or commercial business and public sector business. All of these groups are in this. It has provided significant stability for the purposes of loss, a stop-loss insurance, a risk insurance. And it saved these customers with both the stop-loss contract and other provisions over $30 million. The advantage of this contract to the city of Rocky Mount is you have been experiencing challenges with lasers, that higher pooling level for individuals that are anticipated to be ongoing significant claimants. This contract with Blue Cross does not have a provision for no new laser. It's got a rate cap, so they can't increase the premium more than a certain percentage. And it's got a very unique custom refund provision that if it runs well, then money actually goes back to the high-performing groups. Historically, this pool has had mid-single-digit increases. And when you look at the refunds, it's actually net negative. So for 22, 23, what was returned back to the groups that were high performers was $2.7 million. For 23, 24, $4.3 million. And for 24, 25 contract, which is just being finished up, the expectation is $6.8 million are coming back to the high performance. There isn't another contract that exists in the market. This is completely unique and it's because this book of business is north of $35 million. So it gets treated differently than the rest of the world. So the original renewal that we got from Blue Cross added about $1.3 million of additional lasers. And it was not firm. That means that they could change the proposal. Through the bid process, we got from Blue Cross, we got firm proposals with that laser removed. These provisions down here are the no-new laser, the rate cap, the experience refund. And there's actually a pooling level where the high claimants are actually pulled out for the experience. All in all, this is a very attractive solution for risk mitigation in the future for the city. Economically, from a premium perspective, is a wash. It's essentially the same as where Aetna is today, but these risks really help the city in the out years. You do not have to have Blue Cross administration for this. So we have a couple of clients that have Blue Cross stop-loss. One's the city of Monroe and Dare County, and they do not use Blue Cross for the health plan administration. UHC would not do carve-out, so they're not really in consideration. And for full replacement, they were having challenges with Wake Med. So the challenges or the issues that come along with this. Today, the Aetna stop-loss contract is seamless. Staff doesn't have to do anything at all administratively. There are some administrative tasks that would entail this contract, such as there's going to be a direct billing from Blue Cross that the city will have to pay the premium. Today, it's all bundled together with Aetna. Aetna will be sending monthly eligibility and reporting to Blue Cross for them to adjudicate and pay the claims above the pooling level. And then today, Aetna automatically reimburses the plan for any stop-loss credits. Blue Cross would be sending the reimbursement directly via ACH to the city. Again, just to reiterate from a risk perspective, this really adds a lot of stability for the city. We've got groups in this pool that do have significant claimants. We've got claimants as high as $1.2 million that are consistent, ongoing claims. The one thing about stop-loss high claimants is you're not always going to be in a negative position. So you do have groups that will be rotation. We've seen some groups get a half a million dollars back during the settlement. And then the next year, they not get anything. And then the next year, they get something back. So it's going to be based on the experience, but the block is rated first together and then the allocation for each group based on their own performance. So from a recommendation standpoint, I think from a risk perspective, I think being part of a $35 million stop-loss block will aid the city in a lot of ways on a go-forward basis. This block has been in existence going into its fourth year and it's been averaging basically negatives, negative pricing when you take the distributions into consideration. Any questions of me at all?
If you would, just for the general public, as well as maybe a few in here, if you would just describe exactly what does stop-loss mean?
Yes, sir. So stop-loss insurance is the policy that the city purchases to protect against high claimants. So what it does is if a high claimant goes above $125,000. So if it goes above the $125,000 threshold, then the insurance kicks in and pays the claims on a go-forward basis. But it basically, it's protection against high-cost claimants that the city purchases for individuals that have significant claim activity.
Your husband, doctors, I believe, had some questions?
Sure. Thanks for giving us the presentation. January 1st is our renewal on this. So the last time we received it in October, so what was the holdup?
It was in September, is when the original renewal was delivered, was in September. So this original renewal that you got here was delivered in September.
Delivered to us?
Yes, correct.
To this body?
No, to the staff.
So why are we just seeing it now?
Well, we went through a bid process at the direction of staff for the renewal. And that took time to generate the renewal and to get that back, report to staff, and then reports to you.
Okay, and...
Just from a process perspective, every year, that's the way that it has worked in the past.
Well, in the past, we have a memo here that I found from a previous meeting from October of '24, talking about the renewal for this year, January. So that's, I would like to have more time moving forward. So, you know, we're right here at whatever the 8th of December and we're looking at January 1st. Also, last time, I'm questioning because in this memo that I have from Mr. Barney, actually, it was from Mr. Hunter to Mr. Barney. It shows that option one was, and you can look at it, but option one was recommended with Aetna going to a member deductible $150,000 and estimated total premiums of... So, but in here, unless I'm looking at something different, we've got $125,000.
Correct.
What was the change that we saw?
So we recommended the 150 and the leadership decided to keep the 125 last year.
So I guess my question to you, Mr. Manager, can we go back? I called the city clerk because we just received this today at 12:40. Can we go back and look at the minutes where we approved that last year for the current year that we're in? Because she couldn't find it and I couldn't find it. And I'd like to have that information.
Just for clarification, we received the renewal, but then we asked them to go out for bid. So, because obviously we were going through financial, so we were trying to find savings.
And I appreciate that.
Just want to make sure, we didn't just, I don't want you to think that we said, we had something, we said on it for this long. No, we got something in September. We knew that we're in a financial constraints. So we asked them to go back out and try to bid to see if we could get lower rates.
And I get that, but moving forward, my preference, and I don't know about the preference of this body as a whole, I'd like to have this information sooner than the 11th hour.
Soon as we get it, we'll get to it.
You mentioned administrative burden earlier, and that was one of my questions. And thank you for... Mr. Manager, do we have the expertise, because it sounds like it's going to be on us, to go through and between Aetna and Blue Cross?
No, it's actually, today, it's all packaged together. It's seamless. So the billing from Blue Cross will go to the city as a separate bill. So it is a separate billing item that the city will have to handle. The monthly claims and eligibility will be sent from Aetna to Blue Cross. And then the reimbursement is going to not come as part of the combined package with Aetna, but on a separate basis from Blue Cross to the city. So instead of being all packaged together, it's going to be split apart.
I understand that completely. My question to staff is, do we have the expertise here and the time that we can keep up with this? Especially in light of everything that's going on here at the city. I want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's and that we have the staff that has the capability of doing that. And just one of my questions that I want to make sure that we can handle that.
Well, I would like to have Lisa stand up because her staff will be responsible for it, a combination of HR and finance. But I'm pretty sure it's just another invoice that received. But Lisa, feel free to respond directly.
Yes, we do have the capability. Currently, we get monthly statements from Aetna and we have staff that's there to go over all of these invoices line by line. So it's done now. It'll just be carved out from Aetna and then we'll get a separate invoice from Blue Cross. So it's the exact same thing, just...
So you currently audit it, now audit the current Aetna bill?
Yes.
That's good to hear. Thank you. And so you were talking about the $35 million that you've got with all the different things. So we'll add almost $3 million to that?
Correct, correct.
Okay. All right. So whatever percentage of that?
About a little bit less than 10%.
Right. So, and then, so when does our health insurance, does it renew?
It's on a 1-1 basis. It's every calendar year.
So did, when we renewed it last time, was it for a multi-year?
No. So from a stop-loss perspective, it's only on the...
No, no, no. I'm talking about health insurance, TP, whatever you refer to it as, TPA or whatever you call it. When all our staff has their employee cards where they go to the doctor and...
It's on an annual basis.
And has that been bid out or is that...?
It's been bid out for every year for the last three years.
So we're not going to see that?
So the responses, we can give that to you to show you. The challenge for this particular year was from a timing perspective, to get the ID cards out on time, to get the implementation on time. There was no way that it was going to be able to be...
Okay, my question, I understand and appreciate that, but you need to understand and appreciate where I'm coming from. We have financial issues here at the C-Rock, man. I want to know, do we have an increase in our health insurance? Not with, so that's it right there?
Correct. So this is the, so from an administrative standpoint, the admin went up, but the stop-loss went down. The net effect was about a 2% decrease in total fixed cost.
Okay. Any other changes with our health insurance?
No, sir. Other than we had some changes, which you probably know about on the wellness side. So some contracts were ended to save money. We're still maintaining the diabetes program. That's staying in place. So those that are in the Health MAP RX program for diabetes will continue to be able to be able to get their diabetic medications at no cost if they're engaged in the wellness program.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Your husband, welcome.
Thank you, Man Pro Tem, and thank you again for your presentation. This stop-loss, is it based on where we were employee-wise numerically in September or as of today?
Correct. It was based on the census data and all the information that was in place when the bid was done. So if you have a reduction in force, then you'll see the costs come down.
And does that still make Aetna not our number one choice? I mean, I'm trying to figure out what...
Yeah, so for stop-loss, I mean, and you know, from a pricing perspective for 26, it's a wash. The difference between Aetna and Blue Cross. The real advantage is on the risk side on a go-forward basis. So this contract with Blue Cross protects the city at a much more improved level in both no-new lasers, which you've been getting lasers, we've had to fight those off from Aetna. And you've had a laser in place for probably a decade now. And it's been a negotiation every single year. And then the rate caps, but being part of this larger block will bring a lot of stability. And then the refund provision, if you run well, you will actually get money back, assuming that the entire block runs well, which it has for the past three years.
Okay. And Aetna, and the bid process, just making sure I'm hearing this correctly. But the bid process, it did cause Aetna to remove their laser, right?
Correct.
Okay. So that wouldn't be an issue if we continue with it, right?
So the bid process was successful. It reduced the risk to the city by about $1.2 to $1.3 million.
So numeric, I mean, just for me, what exactly, I heard it will be, our saving will be maybe 10% of that $30 million, so about $3 million. Exactly, what exactly would we save?
So there was a premium increase in laser. So today, where the bids stand today is you're going to save approximately $50,000, about a 2% reduction if you go with Aetna or you go with Blue Cross. The only issue is that you don't have any protection, you don't have these protections in the Aetna contract.
And Aetna right now is the only one that has a, basically, for lack of terminology, a one-stop shop for staff to where everything is backed.
Correct.
Your husband, Blackwell?
So a few questions. This bidding, is this a one-year, is this annual or multi-year?
It has been an annual process, so it's been bid for the last three to four years, every single year. And that's what got us into the improved position for this year.
Okay. Has there been, had there been administrative concerns with Aetna at all?
I don't think there have been any administrative or service concerns, to my knowledge. It's almost...
Concerns from our employees about acceptance of Aetna with local medical practices?
Not really.
And are you stating for the new categories that's below the yellow? Right, that's right. So can you, in layman's terms?
Sure.
That's hard to easy...
No, no, I understand completely.
So why would we want to shift if we've taken the major objection away, which is stop-loss? What does Blue Cross bring to us that we are not experiencing today other than $50,000?
So whether you choose Blue Cross or Aetna, the savings of 50 grand is exactly the same, okay? In layman's terms, so if you look, we got about a $1.2 million laser during the renewal process from Aetna, which added that much liability to the city. So the expectation was that there was a high claimant that was going to generate an additional $1.2 million of liability. The bid process removes that. If you stay with Aetna, you will probably face something similar to that every year as long as, as long as they continue to be unwilling to moderate that. So you take one risk that goes away is no new laser. Second is the rate cap. The rate cap is significant. It's not a, it's 50%. But we've seen scenarios where if claims go the wrong direction, where we've seen millions of dollars worth of lasers and doubling of the premium. So while it doesn't look like it's a big deal, if you have a really bad scenario of high claimants, that rate cap is important. The experience refund below 60% typically...
Excuse me, can you just stop right there? Break it down in little nuggets, okay? So rate cap, that's rate for the entire policy or rate?
Just for the stop-loss contract.
Just for the stop-loss, that's right.
Can I ask a question? So with that, if you recall, many years ago, I was asking a question about aggregate. Is that essentially an aggregate right there?
No, it is not. It's a rate cap just specifically on a specific premium. It is not aggregate, stop-loss insurance.
Okay. So then if a person has a catastrophic illness, I think, is that, am I right? A person has a catastrophic illness and it gets worse. And they are needing to receive more from the medical provider. And the insurance doesn't cover that full, is that what that is?
No, sir.
Okay.
Great question. So let's say it's a scenario where you have, you have a child that has Duchenne's disease, which is a genetic predisposition that's catastrophic. We've had those in our book of business and that is a $1.5 million claim every single year. They're going to get treated. The plan is going to cover all their services. There's no lifetime limit. It's unlimited. The problem is with a laser, you have the additional liability on the city. So we're trying to protect the city against future catastrophic events. So if you end up with a hemophiliac, someone with Duchenne's, you get a child with cystic fibrosis, you get an ongoing leukemia patient that's running $800,000 a year. If you end up in a really bad scenario, you don't have the rate cap, you don't have the no-new lasers, then the city is at risk. And we've seen these things happen, which is why we're making the recommendation. The experience, the 60% target, so the client, in this case, the city, would receive 100% of the money below that 60% threshold. That doesn't exist in any contract that's offered in North Carolina. Usually, there'll be a percentage share of 15%, 20%, 25%, but they won't share the entire amount. And it's not based on a block of business. So I show this to you, so, because we've had customers get refunds as high on an individual basis, as high as $700,000. This year, we've got customers in this block that are going to get $500,000 to $600,000 back from Blue Cross because the block, this block ran well. There were high claims beyond the threshold of $450,000 that were pulled out. So it did help with this. And the stability of this block, because not one group is going to have a bad year every year. And the larger this block gets, and it's going to be north of about $40 million going into '26, '27, adds stability for the entire population. You get to choose your own pooling level, so you're not tied together with one pooling level. So you choose that and you have flexibility to the risk tolerance of the organization. But every year for the past three, you ended up with distribution that are increasing every year. Part of that is a function of the block is getting larger, the pool is getting larger, but because the pool has performed well. And it's not in here, but if you just, the environment today in health insurance is you're seeing significant increase in cost. High claimants, cell therapy, gene therapy, claims are expanding at a significant rate. So it's a very difficult environment. So the reason why we're making this recommendation is we certainly don't want to create more work for the staff, but we're also trying to mitigate risk for the city, just like we're trying to mitigate risk for all of these other groups that are in this block of business. We've got stop-loss business with third parties like Boya, HCC, Tokyo Marine, Cigna, Aetna, United, Blues, obviously. It's a very difficult environment and to see this kind of refunds is a function of a well-managed block is providing stability you just can't get anywhere else. So that's why we're making the suggestion, because we're trying to protect the city against financial risk on a go-forward basis.
So, so it's, are you saying that even though there is a $50,000 savings on the operational side, what's driving your recommendation to us is that we have a potential of receiving an additional $700,000?
We've got a potential of receiving additional monies. The largest has been 700. They've been as low as $50,000 depending on the groups. We've got some groups that have gotten nothing back because they did, they had challenged years. But under no other situation do you have this opportunity. You can get no-new lasers. You can get a rate cap, but this custom refund provision doesn't exist anywhere else. And the reason why is the carriers don't want to give it up. You know, they're trying to maximize their profits. You guys, if you join this, will benefit from the negotiation that has been going on for basically five years. The block went into place, started in '21, the discussion, went in place '22, and since '22, it's performed magnificently.
So, okay, in terms I can understand, so this sort of creates a profit-sharing strategy as long as it's administered appropriately and we don't have in our work, patient or our customer, our customer or Rocky Mount's customers are going to get worse.
Right, so it is it is a way for you to participate. It's actually protection on both the upside and on. The downside. And when the downside, I mean uh it runs well. This is the only the really the only environment. If your if your stop loss premium is running at eighty percent or north. Then the carrier is typically losing money. Eighty percent being that you pay them a dollar in premium. The eighty eighty cents goes out in claims. Anything north of that, they're in a lost position because they've got overhead to cover. And then it's so it's a challenged position. Typically where they make money, they offset. Those lost positions by other groups that run well, right? So they're they're creating their own. Block of business. This takes it down to the employer level where if it runs poorly, you're protected on the top side by the block. If it runs well and you perform well, then you get money back you would have never gotten before. And it's a good guy. It's a contribution back into the conference. I have no way of knowing. Whether you're gonna get a distribution or not, but I do know that being part of a forty million dollar block of business is gonna provide you with stability. You can't get on your own. You can't do it on your own. And then you throw in the other risk provisions protections for the city is the reason why we're making the suggestion.
Last question I have. So do you get paid any differently regardless of who? So you get no um you get no percentage of benefit if we shift or change?
We were charging no, we're not charging any commission on any of these quotes. It's we're we're paid a consulting fee and that's all of it.
Who's our intergovernmental healthcare alliance?
So it is a loose association, a naming convention for the collaboration of all these groups.
But but who whose administers?
Blue Cross.
Blue Cross?
Yeah.
Is that available to any government entity in the state of North Carolina that goes with Blue Cross?
Only through Mark Three.
So it's exclusive?
It's exclusive to us. But it's the largest block of business they've got in the state. Both membership, premium, all of it. It's the most important piece of stop loss business they have in the company.
Are there any other questions?
I just have a comment just regard to the my review of all this stuff over the weekend and whatnot. Uh this one, we're basically in the pool and the other ones we're standalone, is that correct? So that's kinda what you were talking about. This one, it gives us a little bit more leverage because we're a part of a pool as opposed to just being a standalone in the other.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you for being back out.
Thank you for having me. This is my annual visit to y'all. Thank you so much.
And next year, as we move forward, we will likely be bidding out the entire course, entire package because obviously we're looking for all the savings that we can.
So I I got one question really helped you. I'm sort of tracking what um Lide stated earlier. So. The annual contract ends in what month and then we begin our bid process?
I have to verify that. I think it's like October or so. So this year it all hit right when we were uncovering all the stuffs. So we were looking for extra savings. When we got the renewal, just the annual renewal, we asked them to. Rebid it and try to see if we can find discounts and this is what we came back with. So I think it's October, but I'd have to have Lisa verify the exact date.
So if I could just make one comment on it. So for bid process next year, that bid process would start in the June-July timeframe. So that back to your point that you have more time, we just need to we needed to know which is we're getting it sounds like we're getting the direction that everything is gonna be bid. For twenty-seven and so we can start much earlier.
Okay.
Next we'll be reviewing uh the longevity uh updated policy. So if you recall back in uh I think it was early November, council uh voted to repeal. The previous longevity policy and then my goal was to try to present something back to council that is a little bit more uh fiscally stable. But also reinstate something uh for for the city. And so that's what we have for you today. This overview, this will replace uh if approved, this will replace the prior longevity uh policy. Recognize and award long service for full-time employees. In order to qualify, it would be just like the previous policy. You would have to be uh working with the city for at least five years of continuous service. Uh and that's before November fifteenth of each calendar year. So if you work for the city at one point in time and you left. And you came back, then the policy would start with your rehire date. You can't just combine the time. This would be a a lump sum uh payment subject to your typical taxes. And again, this is what I was talking about. It would restart based on your rehire date if you have former employees that uh worked for the city and then came back. The new program will be set as an administrator policy, but it would be subject to an annual council approval and obviously uh subject to budget availability. And payments would be uh issued if we have the funding in December. Any questions so far?
So. Excuse me, I'm sorry. So is any any of your um categories of eligibility changed? From what we were doing prior, who was eligible prior?
Uh no, sir. Uh not yet, but I will get to that as we open it up. So right now, uh this right here was to your question. This right here was the previous policy. So the only thing is changing from the previous policy to what I'm proposing now would be the percentage. We're going from a percentage base as opposed to uh now I'm proposing a cap, a lump sum cap. And so for this, it's very difficult to in the previous policy to even budget for it anyway because. Who knows what an individual salary is gonna be from one year to the next when you have uh merit increases, colas and all that stuff. So it's really just around about. Yes, this right here is more equitable because regardless of what your salary is. So you have your uh senior level people with department heads as well as your entry level employees. If you've been at the city five years, then you'd qualify for this.
Explain, I think we all know, but the percentage, is that percentage of the entire compensation? The former one, the one that that is no longer. Is that the percentage of the entire compensation that the individual made for that particular year?
Uh I would let Ken answer that portion of it, but it's a percentage of their annual salary and benefits.
So yes, sir. Um in your prior practice, it is all co- all direct compensation. So that will also include overtime. And that's been one of the challenges with respect to budgeting is obviously we have we we have employees that are eligible for overtime and they would be eligible for this. And so trying to factor that into their total compensation on an annual basis creates challenges in terms of properly budgeting for it.
Just wanna make sure the public and everyone's aware of the percentage.
And 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 that is the reason why the city back in two thousand eleven uh did not allow any more people to get into this program. Because it was not sustainable.
With your research. What other jurisdictions do longevity pay under a percentage?
Not many. I'd say less than ten percent in all of the people that we've researched and you're talking about looking at over a hundred cities and counties. Most people do uh what I'm proposing. Now, their caps may may differ. For example, I think Raleigh's cap is maybe at the high end three thousand dollars uh for their top level of service. But most places now, if they offer the program, offer the caps. So what I would like to do is implement this for uh this calendar year. So the employees that are currently eligible. Uh which we estimated to be approximately two hundred and twenty-six employees. This would apply to them uh this current fiscal year. So if we add this to the agenda night and it gets approved. Then those uh employees that would have received longevity under the prior uh policy, they will receive the new the new amount uh. This this calendar year. And then the idea would be next fiscal year, uh it would open up to all eligible employees. So that's not every employee. We still have about eight hundred employees and under the current thresholds. It would be about four hundred and fifty people that would then be eligible for the new new program. And even in doing that, so this year it would cost us approximately uh three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to implement. If we just do it for the people who were currently eligible under the old program. If we were to open it up to all employees that had at a minimum of five years of service with the city, we would only still pay. Uh five hundred thousand with the total uh total savings of uh over seven hundred thousand for the year. This year for this calendar year is a savings of almost nine hundred thousand by implementing the new policy. Whereas before uh the old longevity policy, it was gonna cost us one point two three million dollars. Any questions for this? Yes, sir.
So um so the people that was scheduled to get longevity paid this year. Would they be compensated in this plan?
Uh yes, they would be in the goal. So if it gets added to the agenda night and you all vote uh to approve it. Uh then they would qualify under the new program, which would be this threshold. So if you've been here for five years, you would get five hundred. Ten to fourteen, seven fifty, and then get people at the top. If you've been here for twenty-five years or more, you would get fifteen hundred dollars and you would get that this year.
So just to be clear though, you're you're proposing only for the two hundred twenty-six people that would have otherwise been eligible for the we'll call the prior longevity policy.
Correct.
So there won't be anybody in the you say ten to you know five to nine years. That we would be paying out this year. That would be proposed for twenty-seven.
You would get people who were in the five to nine years this year.
Of the two hundred twenty-six people, how many?
No, 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 you're right. You're right. No. These people at the lower end, the people who've been in it since two thousand.
But the next fiscal year, the next budget, you're anticipating that it would be for everybody and that would increase it to five hundred plus thousand.
That is correct. Sorry for the confusion.
About we have the budget.
Right.
Yes, and that's in the new administrator policy. It's pending a budget availability.
That's an extra large asterisk.
Any other questions about that?
I just want to um make a comment that you did research or you and your staff. Approximately a hundred different municipalities.
Over, yeah.
Over a hundred. So you all did an extensive study and analysis. And based upon some averages or whatever, the proposed policy kinda matches. What a majority of those hundred plus are doing.
That is an accurate uh accurate statement. And the benefits of the new policy is just like I was saying earlier. This is basically uh solely on uh your tenure, whereas before your total salary and benefits were included. But this is based on, you know, if you've been here for ten, fifteen years, you're gonna get the same thing as someone uh who is a supervisor or director. It's sustainable. Uh talking about the savings uh this year implemented for just for the two hundred twenty-six, we'll say was. Uh eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars this year alone. Uh if we open it up to the uh rest of the employees uh starting for the next fiscal year. It'd be a savings of approximately seven hundred thousand. But again, that's uh subject to the budget and it's something that will get uh approved each year. This will also help us with retention and recruitment. You know, we're going through a difficult stage now and so when we have uh people. That we're trying to hire to try to recruit to the city, uh they're gonna be comparing us to other municipalities and what we offer for benefits. So this will be good because the city hasn't had an active program since two thousand eleven. This will reopen that program, help us with recruitment as well. And hopefully help us with retention. That's pretty much it. In a nutshell, does anybody have any other questions?
Appreciate you. Um as far as this is not centered around this per se, but. Um over the last, especially since post-COVID, there's been conversations with the league, various conferences that we attend for municipals and different government. Uh around workforce um adjustments and different workforce changes. So. Being that longevity was one of our major draws to keeping employees and uh retaining employees. What are the conversations now, if you all are having any, about what strategy looks like for workforce in the future for the city of Rocky Mount?
Well, we're we're starting those conversations now. Uh obviously, we're going through uh uh what we've coined as a as a reset. But we're gonna look at other ancillary benefits that we could potentially offer uh newcomers as well as people who've been here as it is now. Uh we haven't really started full blown because we're still trying to process and close out what we've currently done with the reduction of force. But we will be exploring uh several things uh in the future uh to ho- hopefully help us retain and recruit employees. One thing uh that's currently on my desk that I'm reviewing is like a sick leave policy. Currently, the city uh does not allow. Uh anyone transferring in from a local government to uh transfer over four hundred and eighty hours. I think that's the the total amount. Uh if you come from a municipality, let's say you've worked there for ten to fifteen years, you've uh over that time accumulated. Nine hundred hours. If you were to work for the city of Rocky Mount, you would technically lose uh those hours over four hundred and eighty. Until you've been here five years. Uh so what I would like to propose uh in the future, maybe even in January, because I'm currently working on it. Is that we allow people to transfer all of their sick time uh into the Rocky Mount space because. It also helps them uh add times towards their retirement retirement benefit. And it's really uh minimal to no cost to us by doing that. Sure, you wanna back me up on that? I'm talking about finance. But it's a a huge benefit for someone uh as we try to recruit and retain people. Uh and the and the reason why this is uh something that I like to examine is because we've already uh done that for a few employees. Who currently work for the city. They've already received all their sick time, but it hasn't been done across the board. So I wanna instead of like kinda cherry picking who does what, I wanna make sure that the policy is available for all employees.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That's just that's just one one example that comes to mind, but obviously we'll be looking at other things as well.
Councilman Doctor?
Back up to the the proposal, the expense. So from a finance standpoint, budget standpoint, comparable with cash flow, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. For this organization if.
Correct. Yes, we would be able to uh do that today and we're prepared. We have everything lined up. We've already. Uh sent payroll to information. We have the employees who are eligible now. The only thing we need now is their proof.
So cash flow, this would not impact tremendously?
As a matter of fact, uh we're starting to receive a little bit more uh due to the tax season. As of today. Our uh total cash balance was about uh twenty-three uh million. So improving for the last time that I've sent out the report. A whole lot, but it's it's going in.
But then we're gonna we're gonna go into a dry spell.
Trending in the right direction. Yes, sir. And throughout the year, we will continue to look at ways that we can find cost savings as we just had the conversation about the stop loss. You know, when I came in as manager that's dealing with this, we're trying to explore everything. Every service that we have, we're trying to evaluate to see. If we could find cost savings there. So we'll be doing that. It's gonna be a non-stop process. Uh it hasn't started to stop and it and it won't stop for the next. Uh several months, we'll continue to be looking for ways that we could cut cut costs.
So you said if we approve this, they get their checks this week?
Not this week. They'll get it before the end of the calendar year. So it has to be processed. It'll be processed during a regular payroll. And I don't know the specific date, but they will have it uh before the end of this calendar year, hopefully before Christmas.
Thank you.
Any other questions, uh Manager Daniels? Is there a consensus that we add this to the agenda item?
So moved.
For the council meeting? Do we have a second? Only favor. Say aye, all opposed?
There you go. I just have one question. I hate to rewind, but um the previous conversation. Is that a presentation for information or are you bringing that to us for action or is that something that you approve?
I have to double check. So I think that is something that I approve, but I wanted to bring it to you for uh information purposes. And if you have uh if the council has any direction one way or another, then you know, obviously I would take that into consideration. Uh I have to just verify that, but if it's not, then it's something that I'll bring back to council at the next meeting.
Put it on our previous.
That's why I said I'd bring. So if you voted, we'll we'll bring it forth, but we want to make sure you.
Do your homework.
I won't be uh approving anything that's over my threshold.
I didn't know because I thought I heard something about January.
Yeah, correct. We might even need.
Sort of the interim budget thing, right?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Were there any other matters to be discussed while we're in public session? If not, do I have a motion for us to go in closed session for attorney-client privilege?
A, a lot of fans of this thinking futuristic. I know we're hearing a lot now about data centers and um sort of, you know, how that is affecting our surroundings. From a staff perspective, uh are we already having conversations around our capacity and possibilities as we look at development? Uh, are we already having those conversations on the staff side to figure out what strategies could look like, what they could look like, where we should or shouldn't even uh try to ascertain or entertain uh the development? But are those conversations being had now on a staff level?
Not only are they being had, we're currently undergoing the capacity test with our uh wholesale uh supplier. So we're, we're down the road. We're trying to get ahead of that because it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when.
Got you. And on the same token, environmentally, are we doing something on the environmental side uh to make sure that we're doing that same environmental study and impact that had?
Yes, as a matter of fact, uh the Electric Cities uh actually has a webinar uh that is talking about that very topic. Uh, I think they're actually gonna record it. So if you're not able to attend it live, uh I will have a link to it and I'll be sure to share that with council and anyone else who, who wants to attend because there's a lot of misinformation that's going out there. And we wanna make sure that if we're gonna uh be entertaining those type of discussion, that people have faculty information.
Got you.
Please, tomorrow is the webinar.
Yep, I think so.
Okay. These are just some high-level conversations that are happening globally um at our municipal conferences that are trickling their way down. Uh, I mean, we already see Edgecombe County, but uh just wanna make sure from a city perspective. I know we talked about our water capacity a few years back. Uh, just make sure we're doing what we can.
Yeah, the key will be finding the right fit and making sure that we're getting uh accurate information. I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all, but I think uh doing our due diligence on the front end can't do anything but benefit the city.
And also, last, last point, I may have brought Tim, but from a, I know we have our uh, I know Alan Matthews is our business development uh director for the city. What are we doing as a city to highlight some of these recent wins that we've had with Slim Chickens and uh Raising Canes here recently? And other, our housing developments also, I believe, as a development, maybe coming off Benvenue uh and, and your board as well.
Well, I don't wanna say anything that is considered uh confidential with economic development. What I will say is my understanding that uh Mr. Matthews will be doing a presentation at the first of the year. So he will, and I think the idea is that moving forward, uh that entire team, uh and then we'll have some people in-house too, will be giving regular updates, at least quarterly to the uh, to the council.
Appreciate it.
Councilman Walker, very good questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, but we got a lot of success stories that we really need to get out and I'm, I'm compiling the list for grants to send out. But I think it's good that the public as a whole, you know, understands that uh I think Councilman Blackwell, you're the one that said, rock him out, we're still in business. So we've got a lot of positive things, a lot of momentum, and we're trending in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, uh do I hear uh proposal or recommendation that we go in closed session for returning client privilege? Economic development and personnel? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Uh, we're now in closed session.
Do you guys who do a little bit of stuff with the league, are they having any conversations about bunking?